All right, we're good?
Sure.
And we'll see what we can come out with, right?
Make a motion when we come out of the executive session?
Sir.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so then we're gonna jump into item number one. Uh, we are going to open bids for the property equalization project. We have one.
We got one?
Hopefully it's a bid.
I thought it was two. It was such a tall stat.
Oh.
Alright, I'm not good with these. I'm not allowed to share things.
Oh my goodness.
How about that? Just tear it open. This is from RCS Assessment Services, Inc. Please find enclosed a cost estimate of $150,000 for the equalization project of the town of Lyman to be effective tax year April 1st, 2026. And then it talks about the team of six certified main assessors, two residential commercial property listers, etc. They, it gives the current client list, which includes the town of Alleghash. There's a listing of probably 12 contracted reevaluation firm for, uh, one, two, three, or another six or eight towns. And did, uh, reevaluations for the town of Herman and the town of Cornet recently.
Do you know if they separated out? Like, we had asked for some groundwork to get her caught up on backlot, but I wanted, I put it in the RP as like, maybe a separate thing in case we wanted to like just cross out that line?
I guess you'd...
Or I can follow up and ask them.
It's, it's pretty detailed what they're, what they wanna do. Do you want me to just read the whole thing, or?
No, I can, I can look through it, follow up and ask them.
I mean, it's the only one we got, and it, this is far better than the letter that we got previous to this that said, "Oh, we don't have time for this right now." I was all excited about that one. I'm way more excited about this, even though the cost, uh, made my stomach like go down to here. So at least it's under the table, so that's good. It's, uh, probably five or six pages, but it's RCS Assessment Services, Inc. Josh Berry is the owner, and the price is $150,000. You could review this to see if it meets the specs of the bid, because I don't even know.
Is that, is that a cre- a, a complete revale?
That's what it sounded like.
It's not.
No, I think they were just...
It's for the equalization project of the town of Lyman.
To bring it back up.
What they're, what, what I, what they were talking about is their experience as such. During the property visit, our team will review the structure, its neighborhood and its environment to build valuations. It does sound like a revale, doesn't it?
It sure does.
Cause...
Yeah, the bid we put out was asking for, basically to update those cost tables in the background to help us while we're evaluating stuff. Yeah, so I can always reach out and ask them to clarify.
So, and, and if you do, you re-review it, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So, I would table awarding it until we see how that's met. So I make a motion, we table it until it can be reviewed by the town manager.
Sir.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's the end. I'm interested.
Alright, we're gonna move into public comments. Public in attendance, hold up to five minutes to address the board. Please use the podium and address the board, to address the board who is your respectful of others. In the public comments. Priscilla.
Yay! Sorta kinda. Okay, for those who don't know me, I'm fortunate for you. My name is Priscilla Willett, I live in Lyman. I have, uh, probably 35 years, give or take. So, recently a thing happened. And, uh, upon checking my town of Lyman voicemail, there was a social worker on the phone. And there were some concerns about couples and hitting their home and this, that and the other thing. So I called the social worker, they had the numbers of the residents, I called the resident. I made some phone calls here to find out exactly what the, what had happened. I'm not gonna go into that, cause it's just, it's stupid, and I'm not going into it. So here we are, four days out. And those people didn't get any oil. They still don't have any oil, it was five o'clock tonight. Well, we have oil, but he put it on a credit card. So he's gonna be paying for that. Well, you know how credit cards go. Right? And been getting emails back and forth. Couple of things that aren't gonna happen. Not at my age, not at my interest, I've been doing this for a decade or better. My outgoing message is long, but it's fine, and it has been. You can get to me by voicemail, okay? And I got a log to prove it. I return each call within a day or so. I'm not gonna tell you I'm perfect, cause I'm not. So, there's that. So to say that my message is long, and it's, you can't reach it, and that's all mistrust. It's all lies or something, I don't conjecture, I don't know what it is.
Just so you guys know, this has to do with personnel issue that I'm dealing with, return another employee.
Wait. Jeanette can cut me a check for $283.33 to cover me for Ju- for January. I resign my position effective January 31st. I'll bring you all your paperwork, and I'll leave it here, cause there were too many hands in the pot. I spoke to the people of the oil company, I can fix that. But, I was told that someone else was given the task, and they were to see it through to its logical conclusion. So, I'm gonna leave it the way it is, and that poor man is just gonna pay for that oil, that's all there is to it. So you can't get ahold of me? Maybe not. Not immediately. I make $3,400 a year. If you think that I am sitting at my desk in my home office and answering that phone every time it rings, you are sorely, sorely mistaken. I'm not gonna do it. $283 for the month of January works out to be somewhere around, I don't know, 50 bucks, 50, 60 bucks a week, right? That works out to be about three hours a week. Eh, three hours a week? I'm not gonna do it. I started out doing it altruistically, it sounds really, really good to me, really, really good to my kids. I'm not gonna be impugned, I'm just not. Not gonna say I'm not doing my job, I'm not gonna do it. So, the cute little Apple phone that I'm provided by the town. Print out voicemails, oh god, you gotta love it. There are also voicemails that come to me that say, "How do I sign up to get, uh, absentee ballot? Can you tell me what hours the dog, the, the dump is open?" But, I mean, you can't imagine, I mean, I get all these stupid things on my voicemail. I don't return those calls. Nope, not $3,400 a year, I don't. So, it's been a fun decade. I have three things that have come in over the past, eh... It's been a week, probably. This gentleman with the charge card is one of them. I'm gonna try and see what I can do to make that go away. Uh, I got a couple other things I have to write the narratives on. He'll have all my files, my computer, my phone. It's all coming back to you. I do need a banker's box. Other than that, it's been a great few decades, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? Uh, mail in the packet, we have the York County share inside our bulletin, that's part of the packet. People will look at that, it's posted online. Uh, we will jump into unfinished business. I don't think we have any updates on the franchise agreement, no?
Or if we're gonna have them.
We might, someday, you never know.
I've been on this board for a year and a half now, again, and I have heard of it. Talked about it. We thought we were making progress at one point. Yep.
Uh, we'll jump into item B, YMCA discussion regarding the 2025 contract. I think Andy stuck with us long enough to join us. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah. Andy Rozier from the Sanford Springville YMCA CEO there. Just, I don't know, where do you wanna start?
We can start wherever.
Okay.
Do you send, yeah, so Andy and I met, I don't know, last week, I think?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
So just a review, I sent him the contract back in December, um, and the park management rules. So we talked about that, clarified some of the questions you had. I guess, and so where we kinda left it was, we changed some things where we would apply a fee, a fee schedule for the field use, uh, which we talked about that. And then for the payment of the management of the park would be collection of the entrance fees. And I think if I remember correctly, that was something you were kinda not really, you know, in favor of. And so, I said, well, let's have a conversation with the board, and go from there.
Absolutely, so obviously had some questions regarding the, uh, the new contract that was written as it's written. And, uh, I think that, uh, there's definitely some challenges that we would be faced with along the way. The things that we talked about in the workshop, uh, earlier this fall, uh, many of those things are not a problem. We've already started to put place in, things in place to do a better job of, uh, the communication, which was a, you know, very clear, uh, message, um, that we accepted and, uh, understood. Uh, so we've already in the process of having a leadership person who's from the town of Lyman, uh, resident from the town of Lyman, be that spokesperson to make sure that those communications and the connections between the town of Lyman and us are much better handled, handled much better. We also, um, don't have an issue with, uh, the other aspects of the work that we talked about, which is, you know, daily logs, monitoring, managing, and, uh, you know, keeping a close connection to the town and being, um, timelines being better in regards to if there is an issue, response time and communication. So, all those things that were part of the contract were not an issue. Um, there was no, um, in the contract itself, there was no comment on or notes regarding, um, the management fees in the past or what was currently being there. Uh, I sought that information and at the meeting, uh, with Lindsay and I, she informed me that, uh, you guys were considering, uh, having us do, uh, through the, our fee would be through the gate fee. And that's just, the gate fees are way too inconsistent. Uh, the, the cost of operating is, is, has been in this process, uh, in a contract for a long time, and reasonably. Uh, we've gone through and, uh, had conversations over the many years of the increases that were needed, and as everybody else business-wise, you know, are incurring additional costs, because most of the cost is the cost of staff at the gate. And there are years where, uh, the gate fees are significant, and there's years where the gate fees are not. And we just can't operate as an organization guessing at what our rates are gonna be or what we're gonna get reimbursed for. Um, and there's just not enough consistency, uh, for that within the gate fees. If you happen to have a rainy season, which we had two years ago, that number plummets in regards to what your gate fees are gonna be. Um, if you have a really nice season like last year, um, then you're gonna get those gate fees. Um, you know, last year it was around $34,500, $500 of the gate fees that came in. Um, our, our rate for the contracts has been $41,000 for the last three years in the contract. And that all happened based off of the increases of the cost to operate the building, or the, uh, the park and the management of that. Uh, the additional cost of, you know, being charged to use the field, um, is also something that was not expected and continues for the camp to do that. Uh, part of our long-term agreement that we've had when we were asked to move the camp out there, and, uh, we agreed to do that, was the fact that we would be able to have some of these other things going on, um, that we weren't gonna be limited in the usage. We haven't, we don't feel that we've taken advantage of any of that usage. Our time of when we're using the field is, um, during the daytime, and there's not a lot of people moving through there. I understand that you guys are looking to try to generate some additional revenue through, um, through there. But, um, you know, we only use the field from potentially 9:30 to 2:30, 3 o'clock at the most because of the transporting of the kids to and from, and the usage of the, the rest of the space with the, uh, with the waterfront and other activities. I think that, I'm not sure that the historical knowledge of the things that we've done over the years to be good partners and to help with bringing, um, exposure to the park and generating more opportunities for people to know about it and coming to the park is, um, not sure if it's, if it's, if that's really clear, uh, to, um, to you and for the historical perspective. Um, over the years, we've also been very good stewards of the property in regards to, the things that we did prior to the forestry plan, um, the trails that were, were, that were there. Uh, we did a lot of work with volunteers coming in, and even with our older kids, you know, we got them involved in stewardship and the usage of that space. So, um, we also, you know, built bridges. I mean, there's two or three bridges that are there that have had been repaired over time, and one brand new one that was built. And so, we feel that we have been investing in that as a partner in this, in, in the usage of the space and helping to do that. Regardless of our last year and the experience we had, I hope that doesn't negate, um, the experiences we've had for the prior 16 years. So, um, I just know that, I don't know that my board is going to accept us to go into a contract where we have no idea of how much money we're gonna be able to generate. And the, especially with the expenses, which I delivered to you all in regards to what it's costing us. Uh, this isn't a break-even point for us, and, uh, you know, the, you know, the risk of having and managing staff in a public center, uh, all of those things come into play. It's, you know, what we've taken on, um, for, for our part of it. And I think you all understand the, the challenge of managing staff, keeping staff, and keeping, uh, operations in, in good shape. So, um, I don't know what other discussion we wanna have regarding that.
Well, for me, the, um, the field use part of that, is that we're establishing fees for field use and, uh, so, to not include you in that, to me, would be like, uh, singling, singling someone out, favoritism in a sense. To be fair, if we're charging one entity for field use, I feel like we, we'd have to charge all entities for field use. That's, that's where I was coming from on that. That part of it. I hear what you're saying, um. And I, I don't know if we're too far apart or not.
So if you take a look at the numbers, you know, the, the contract has been $41,000 for the last three years. You're talking, you're asking us to take on gate fees minus the fees for the, for the, um, the large groups in the pines, which is a couple thousand dollars. So you're basically asking us to drop down to 30, you know, in the range of potentially $31,000, $32,000. I don't see that happening. And we don't want to lose, uh, this partnership, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of what it costs us to operate. If that doesn't align, then I understand that. Or if you're looking to go into a different direction, then I, I need to understand that also. Because if that's the case, and we're not gonna operate there, um, I need to make plans right away to figure out where I'm gonna run our camp.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've never, from my very first, I think when I first started coming to select board meetings, it was right after that, that the YMCA's next contract was coming up. And I just, I never could understand why we were paying somebody. It would, it would be like, I just never understood why we were paying somebody to come in and, and run this, you know, at our own park. We're paying, it was like, if I buy a house and I say, Randy, you're gonna move into, into the house, but I'm still gonna pay for it, you're just gonna live there for free. I mean, I wouldn't, I would never do that. I don't think a business would do that either. And I think that the town, from my perspective, the town is a business, and we have, you know, we have to explain to the taxpayers, how do we keep, you know, we're paying $41,000 to the Y, but then we have almost $40,000 in expenses. And, yeah, we're getting, I mean, last year was a good year, we got $30,000 back. But, I mean, if you go back to like 2020, or what, it was like $11,000, $14,000. It, you know, the Y expects the town to eat that, but we're not allowed to ask for the Y to, you know, like, help us out, help us keep this, you know, for our, for our residents. My other thing is, you know, with the Bugginup Park Committee, there was somebody that came in and assessed the park. And the park was, it basically failed. It's poor, it's in a poor condition. There haven't, there hasn't been anything done there. I mean, the trails are being done again by a Eagle Scout project that, that we've approved and, and other citizens. So I don't know, yeah, I don't know when, if you guys started in 2006 or whatever, if that's when you did the trails, and then those just fell to the wayside. But they're all being done again, you know?
And they were all destroyed because of the, the forestry plan. And it's not, I wouldn't say all, but meant, most of them were disrupted and had to be rerouted. And there's a lot of, a lot of work that was done, and it was needed. I mean, it's a beneficial thing for the park to have that forestry plan. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But this contract began because the town was trying to find individuals that would manage the park, because they didn't wanna do it on their own, and because of the cost and the risk of hiring staff and the management of all that staff, um, didn't have the capacity to do that. If you're stating that that's what you wanna do moving forward, then I appreciate that and respect that. But, um, we can't operate it and, and not be able to, uh, cover our costs. And that's what you're asking us to do. Potentially, you're asking, well, I'm, be honest with you, you're asking us to step back with a risk and how many people would potentially say, okay, it's gonna cost me X amount, and if the gate fees don't come in, we're gonna take the hit? And that's what you're asking us to do.
That's what you ask us to do every year.
But that's, that's a contract that you started with us 16 years ago.
Yeah.
If you're looking to go in a different direction, I just need to know that.
I think that's why we're discussing.
If I, if I may, and I speak for myself, Andy, this is Dave, in the empty seat. Um, as overseers of the poor, I personally can't justify using taxpayer money to subsidize an entity that is not the exclusive benefit to a Lyman resident. I'm having a hard time with that. Um, as for the condition of the park, I, I agree with Amber. It's in poor shape. We just, you know, rebuilt a bridge there with donated, uh, lumber, uh, we paid for, for labor, we, uh, uh, redid the chapel, we cleaned up some widow maker trees, we, we cleaned up the pines, and we're doing all this. And what it comes down to is the benefit of the Y's program that isn't benefiting enough Lyman children. That's my issue. My issue is also, when we talked in the spring, you had mentioned it cost $350,000, and you lost $30,000. Now, I understand you were put on the spot, but I haven't received anything except, uh, some information a few days ago in regards to monies that actually came in, and it looks like it's been, it's under $200,000. So, at this point, I don't think we have the correct data to even figure out what's coming in, what's going out. I had asked for state filings. I can, I can see online the state filings, but that's all put together. It's not clear what actually got put towards, uh, Bugginup Park, what the expenses and what, and what the income was. So, I don't see how a board can say, you know, okay, run with it, we'll subsidize you this year, and with the hopes of getting $10,000, uh, uh, I'm $30,000, $30,000 back, but we're still subsidizing $10,000, we still have $10,000 in hard costs. It's not, I don't think it's right for the board to ask the taxpayer for that. So, simply, if we can work together, it needs to, in, in my opinion, and I speak for myself, it needs to be a net zero. I don't care how we get there, but we can't be putting the taxpayer on the hook of running a business that isn't a full benefit to the town of Lyman.
Yep, I understand that. And that's the message that I'm hearing now, so.
I'm sure.
Yep.
I think one thing that we have had, it's not so much a subsidy, but a business transaction with the law. We've been providing a, an amount of money for that to operate the, uh, booth there. So I think it behooves us to, uh, try to figure out how much it recues the town. If we, uh...
Did you recuse yourself from this discussion?
From voting. I represent, I took a vote. To represent best interests of the town of Lyman, which is what I'm doing right now.
Typically, um, I don't care either way, usually when people recuse themselves, like, if you take the board with bias, then you're changing their vote. So like, your interaction could change how it gets voted, even though you recuse yourself from voting, you can still kind of interact with the other members and change their votes on it. But, I'm not saying that I care one way or the other.
Well, when I was on the planning board, and the issue of the Camp Luska Tower came up, I recused, I recused myself from voting that. But did, uh, provide ideas for discussion with the other members, which is what I'm doing right now. Again, uh, we'd have to compute, uh, how much it would cost us directly to, uh, take care of the booth at the moment.
And I think back, and I'm, because I just started in 2022, but like Amber and Michelle did ask that question, and if I recall, it came to be about somewhere around $40,000. Like, if we were to hire our own staff. And I think Andy, like, just so you're aware, and I, I can't like speak for the whole board either, but I do feel like that's been a conversation for the past couple of years, is like, how does the town kind of take back that park? And maybe, you know, in a perfect world hypothetically, like, the town manages it. I don't know when that'll happen, if it'll happen, but, you know, essentially if we did figure out a way to staff the booth, we'd be looking, it's not that we wouldn't wanna work with the Y, but we may say to you, you can rent the park for your program, and then we would be telling you how much we'd wanna rent it to you, potentially. Cause then, you know, if we're staffing it ourselves, we've solved that problem. And I think right now, the working relationship the Y's had with the town is that you helped us staff that booth. And that's the motivation I'm here for.
I believe there was more to that, if you take a look at the historical parts. I mean, that bridge we put in was pro, and that was all equipment and donations of our maintenance time that were charged. That one bridge is probably a several thousand dollar bridge. The rest of the work that's been done around the park, I think is, and, and it's okay, you know what? If we're gonna go in this direction and you just don't feel that we're the right partner, then that's, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not looking to, you know, debate that. If you don't feel that, then, then partnerships are about feelings, and, and I understand that. And it's also business, and I understand that piece of it too. But we can't, we can't operate on a guesstimate of how much it's gonna cost us. I can't take a loss in that. And I, I don't know that my board would even accept the passage.
If you wanna consider something, instead of, you know, entrance fees, maybe it's a, you know, based off the data that we know, it's a flat fee of X. it's a flat fee of X, right? So you're still going to collect the entrance fees and, you know, cover that cost. Is an option, or an idea.
It's, it's still a guesstimate. I mean, every season is a guesstimate, based off the historical path that we've seen. If it's a rainy season, you're not going to make the thirty-four-five. And you also want to keep, you know, keep the dollars that are part of the, the pines, because you're going to manage that piece now through your software that you were talking about. And so that's another chunk of money that's not part of the funds that would be covering to help cover the cost of it.
So it sounds.
But you can calculate it yourselves and figure out what, what that cost is and whether that forty-one thousand dollars is worth your dollars.
I, I was trying to find a happy medium, but it sounds to me like you want a lump sum of forty-one thousand dollars and nothing less. Does that sound right?
Uh, that's, that's what we've done in the past, so.
Okay. I just, I was trying to work out something else, but.
I'm not sure. I'm not understanding where you're, how you're coming up with the funds.
Instead of in lieu of, like, you know, collecting fee, entrance fees in lieu of payment, because you're saying it's just too inconsistent. It could be, uh, you know, we know on average it's thirty-two thousand dollars of entrance fees that we just say, your contract price is thirty-two thousand, and you break it out like we have with the forty-one thousand, but it sounds to me like.
But it's still not enough to cover the cost. And you, you just said that you think it's going to cost about forty-one, that forty thousand dollars to run your, to run your own staffing.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, I hear from you, you want forty-one.
And the risk of all that comes along with that staffing. So that's, you know, um.
Andy, you mentioned, um, you mentioned rainy seasons. When, when the park gets rained out, do the employees get paid?
Uh, they have the last couple of years because you asked us to stay on regardless. Because we're there with camp, so we don't lock the gate. You didn't want us to lock the gate during days that are downpours and things. So we've, we've honored that and continued with it.
Um, I don't have a whole lot to add at this moment. I'm, I'm trying to process the conversation. I don't know that we could staff the park and take care of the things that, that they take care of and, and make it net zero. I think in a way, net zero was a pipe dream. Because our costs will go up if the Y doesn't, or someone doesn't, if we manage it ourselves. And, um, I do want to say that I think that it's been a great partnership for the reasons of which, when it started, we really needed it. Are we outgrowing it? Maybe. But I, uh, I, I, I understand in that zero concept. I don't know if it'll ever happen, honestly, because, I mean, we look at, we were talking during budget the other day about, um, uh, a position to help. And that with the benefits and the things would be about sixty-eight thousand dollars. And so some of that you could prorate and say, well, if they're at the park this much time, that part of the salary is this, but, I mean, I just, I just don't see how it can happen.
Vic, if, um, using last year's numbers, uh, you know, forty-one thousand, getting, getting ten thousand dollars back, it cost us ten thousand dollars. We still have hard costs of approximately ten thousand. It might be seven to ten. Okay? We still have those hard costs. Keep them aside. You're going to be paying them anyway. You have a, a bill coming in, ten thousand dollars. If you shut that gate and you close the park down, you don't pay that ten thousand dollars. You still have your hard costs, because you're still going to mow. You probably don't have the trash. You don't have, you know, the, the, uh, septic porta-potties and what have you. But to net, to get to net zero isn't as a far reach as you can get. Now, I, I already agreed that I'm not, I'm not completely stuck on that. But I need Andy to understand that we are, as a town, subsidizing a business that is not benefiting the town of Lyman. That's where I'm hung up.
But it, it, it does benefit us as far as, um, we are not staffing the park. Um, and also.
We're, we're paying ten thousand dollars to have that staffed.
I'm wondering if you've also considered, um, the fact that we are putting more money into the park to, to, to make it, um, a recreational destination for all the seasons.
Absolutely.
Which is going to raise.
And hopefully, that will benefit the residents of Lyman. Um, I, and believe me, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just.
I understand you're not arguing with me, but I kind of wish you would not cut me off quite so much.
I'm sorry. I, I can't, it's delayed a second.
I get it. I understand. That's why I'm not going to make a big deal out of it. Uh, I just, uh, I guess I'm having a harder time ripping the Band-Aid off because it's really, uh, it's no fault of the Y's that we're coming to this conclusion. And I also am thankful for what they have poured into the, the place and the town over all these years. And it, it just kind of seems like, uh, you know, it seems like we're kind of just hanging them out, in a sense. I like to find a happy medium, is what I'd like to do. And I don't know what that is, because it's, we seem like we're fairly far apart at the moment, and I, it's not really a good feeling.
And we weren't required along the way to do capital improvements. That's never been part of the contract, but we did. We did some of those capital improvements along the way to try to be good stewards, knowing that we're, you know, we're, we were, um, engaged in a relationship that we felt was, was beneficial. Um, so we, we did spend some of those dollars, um, to do that, to help with, you know, supplies that we had to build, to build the boardwalk that's going between the pines and the volleyball. It's always been a mess. Um, and so, you know, those, those are things that we felt were reasonable and, and needed. So, you know, I've just, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable, obviously, you can tell by my voice, and the fact that I feel that there's just not an appreciation for the work we've done and, that we have been doing over the years. And we had, you know, a year of, of, uh, poor communication, and I hope that that's not what's really, um, vetting this out. But I also know the business end of things. And I also know that, you know, it costs money to make things happen. And that, you know, if your vision is to, is to move it in a direction, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to try to convince you it's something else. But I just need to know where we stand so that I can, uh, bring it back to my board and we can make a decision on where we're going to go. Because we'd have to make significant adjustments on ours too.
I mean.
I feel like too, that it's also January already. And, uh, so time is of the essence. This has languished since October. That's when the, the contract ran out, right? So.
Yeah, so it started this process a few months ago.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to seem like I'm wavering back and forth, although I am, because I'm trying to think of as processing in that happy medium place. So in a way, it, it might be wise to figure out, uh, a, a conclusion, but not, not an immediate one. If, if that's where, where we are going, like he's asking us and, and saying that, if this is where you're, you're headed, I can handle it, but I need to know. I'm wondering if we shouldn't continue as we were for the next year and then go from there, um, as a plan. And that, that gives them time and, and their respect of what they've already put into it. And it also gives the town a clearer direction. And in that meantime, we could probably, uh, talk to the people that live in this town and see if that's a direction that they want us to go in. Because I feel like the input of the people is, is important. And I also recognize Dave's point of, you know, how many kids from the town of Lyman go to the Y and does it directly benefit and whatnot. Um, so there's a whole lot of things and pieces in moving parks to it. It, it's really, it's, it's pretty unsettling at this moment for me.
And I think if you guys, whatever, if you do go forward, I think I would ask just for, like, we still have to work on better communication with the Y. And I understand, like, Andy's point, you guys had helped us out with, like, building bridges and platforms and stuff, but those are some of the things I know, I personally have asked, you know, Matt or somebody in the past two years to get information on what is falling apart over there. And I've never received anything from the Y, you know, hey, this is falling apart, because we wanted to work towards budgeting and figuring out what does that park need? You know, so I can appreciate there was some work put into it. But I don't feel like it's fair to pull that card out now and say, well, we did you guys solid. Because what we've been asking for was that you guys communicate very effectively with the town so we can understand this park better and understand how to improve it. So the communication piece has to be improved. We've been asking for it for a couple of years.
And, and I acknowledge that and I accepted that, but I just think that, um, no, I'm not disagreeing that we, that we, we, um, didn't hold up a full end of our bargain. Uh, but it wasn't like we weren't doing anything and we weren't doing our best to provide, um, exposure and opportunities for more people to come. You know, I, I don't have any data, but I know that when we brought camp out there, the numbers increased of the usage out there. And that could have been a coincidence, um, or because we didn't collect the data in that manner. Um, you know, there's, it's, it's just, it's, um, I, I just hope that we're not holding the last year, um, as, as a measure of the work that we've done in the past. And, um, if we do part ways, it's a mutual understanding and, and appreciation for, um, what, what each parties are trying to accomplish and need to accomplish in order for that to happen. So, that's all.
From this conversation, it seems clear to me that, that the end is coming for the management aspect of it. If that's, that, I hear that from Dave, in a sense. I hear that from you.
I don't.
In a sense, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
And so that's, it's, it seems like that's what's coming. So maybe we need to have a clearer plan for the succession, or maybe moving the management part out of what they're doing, um, in the future.
I mean, for me, we have in our agenda packet from our A T committee, that all has to do with Bunginut.
Yep.
And the price tag on that.
I, uh.
Is, you know, um, it's.
Substantial.
It is, yeah. And so how do we justify, oh yeah, we're making this improvement, but we're still going to pay this? If, and this is just my own personal thing, I would like to see, like Dave asked, what, just Bunginut, what you take in, how many kids, what you take in for those kids, what your expenses are for those kids, you know, for that.
In regards to the summer camp?
Yes.
That budget was sent to you.
No, the, the stuff that we received, your little, like, Excel spreadsheet markup.
Yeah, you asked for, for the financials for that, so that's what I've given you.
Okay, I'd have to look back at that, but that seemed.
It's, it's the revenue for the last three years and the expenses and the net.
Okay. So I, and this, yeah, in.
I get a feeling that you don't feel that we're being honest and upfront with you guys.
There may be a little bit of that.
That, so this, this partnership and all partnerships are based on trust.
Yeah.
And if you don't feel that we're being trust, you're not, that we're not being upfront and honest with you over the lack of communication we had in the last year, um, I'm sorry that that's the case.
I mean, and as to Lindsay's point, it's not just last year. It's not in this year, last year. It goes beyond, it goes a couple of years back. Because I can remember my first year when I was on the Budget Committee, when I started looking into it.
Mm-hmm.
I asked the Select Board Clerk to reach out to the Y to get this information. And they said, we're not providing that to them. We'll provide it to the Select Board if they ask for it. And the Select Board didn't want to ask for it. But it was, at the time, I was still an elected official doing a budget, you know, duty to the town. And it was just dismissed. So it's not, it's not just last year. If, if the town said, okay, go to your board and say, ask your board, how much will they pay the town for you guys to rent, to rent the park from us?
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would be interested in seeing what they would say, how much they would be interested in paying us to rent the park for you guys to go there daily.
Well, and I think, go ahead, I'm sorry, cut.
Yeah, that's it. No.
So, I mean, I, I, when we started this and we moved camp out there, it was an agreement that the exposure that that was going to give you, the opportunity to have more people out there, and that you wanted to, originally, when this contract started eighteen years ago, there was always an interest to run a camp there. We tried that for two years in the beginning. And all we had, we, we had minimal numbers. It didn't allow us to run a camp there. Minimum numbers being fifteen to thirty kids, um, on, on a week. And, and every week wasn't that number. So then we continued to offer those opportunities as we had at the Y. And then when we, the opportunity opened up, we had a conversation around bringing camp out there as a whole to, to give more exposure to the, um, to the experience. And obviously, it's a great location for us to run a camp. So those things were comparable, uh, comparable to the board at the time and continued to do the work that we did over the years, um, in, in supporting, uh, projects and work, management. Um, and so that's how this has all evolved. And once again, if this is something that you, you, you know, obviously, it looks like you want to go into a different direction, I'm okay with that. But I need to know, because I need to make some change, I need to make moves right now in order to prepare for our summer camp. So, and I, I understand where you're coming from. So I guess that's, I'm just repeating myself now, so.
Yeah.
And vice versa, so.
Yeah.
We don't want to, I don't want to continue with it.
Yeah.
I'll just chime in, because I haven't chimed in. I have to say that I don't know how we as a town would staff this otherwise, this, this year. Um, and I don't personally feel like it's fair to just pull the rug out from under the Y. I am a Lyman resident, and in full disclosure, my kids have gone to the camp. Uh, it's been a good experience for them. So I'm certainly not saying let's enter into a three-year, lock it down kind of contract and hope for the best, because I think continuing to do the same thing again and again, and having a variety of different outcomes, um, isn't smart. Um, but I, I just don't know how the town would do it otherwise this year. So I hear, I hear the concern of wanting to hit net zero. I hear the concern of wanting to sort of take over the park. I just don't know that we're there today. I don't know that. It's, I mean, it's almost the end of January, and I don't know that we're in a position to staff a booth. I don't know if we don't. I don't know that we're in a position to just let people run rampant at the park all summer, so. Um, that's my two cents, but I just. Yeah.
Sorry. I did the same thing. I would propose that we would, um, do the same contract that we had, only not for three years renewable, just for a year, so we can have time to investigate and make a plan, because I don't want the park, uh, to suffer this summer. I don't want the camp to suffer this summer. And that way, we could have communication also. Um, which is, was our big bone of contention, the first time we met to talk about it. Uh, and that's what I would propose.
How would you handle, like, the field, field use fees?
The field use fees, I'm not willing to compromise on because I don't think it's fair. I'm, I'm all about being fair. I don't think it's fair to let one entity skate on the fees. The hourly fees, I thought, were fairly reasonable that we, uh, set forth. And, um, I don't, I'm not willing, I wouldn't be wanting to, uh, make deals or let it not be paid by somebody, because it's about fairness for me also.
I guess the other question I had, that Lindsay and I talked about is regard to the general usage. Um, is there any issues with us still running if we are moving forward? Um, is there any issues with us still running if we are moving forward, uh, continually to use the swim area that we've established to run our programs there during the time that we are there? Cause the process has always been that while we are there, we can't take the risk of managing the public in with the camp kids, um, and the camp program. And so because the liability at that point lays on us compared to an open lake swim where you, you know, don't use lifeguards.
Correct. Does it, does it, um, how, does it, does it impede you from the public from being able to swim while you guys are having your classes? I mean, I, I don't know how that works.
So you have, you have an open swim area now off the fields. We've, we have developed a swim area separately, um, to the left of the field, if you're looking down from the hill. So it's, uh, towards the, yeah, thank you. And then, so that space is a space that we use, that we rope off. It's controllable and manageable while we're there with lifeguards. Um, and we have, you know, a couple of, uh, docks there for helping with boating and access off and on the water. So if that space, I, I, we are not, our liability risk would not be good. Plus I, I don't want the public intermingling with the kids. Because as parents, you're not looking for someone to have that kind of an experience, right? It's the whole focus around safe child environments. And so, um, I just need to know that our, in the past, while we are there during the day, during the weekdays, that space has been identified as ours to use. Public has understood that, they have their space, but then when we leave at nighttime or during the weekends, it's open usage.
But you don't provide lifeguards to the public. You provide lifeguards for
For the program. Correct.
So what I would propose in this, would be to leave everything the way it has been
Okay.
for this next season, for a year. A one-year contract.
With exception of the field.
And, and so everything would be the same except for you'd be paying field fees, the hourly rate like everybody else.
So do we have grants that we've gotten to use at Bunginut that stipulate that it has to be open to the public for access? Or do we have grants that we're in the process of?
Um, the only grant we got was the ramp one, uh, from A A R P. I don't know about other grants in the process. I know the Bunginut committee had talked about looking into grants. Um, and that some of the larger grants they wanted to look into did mention some language around it, like it can't be for public, it has to be for public benefit, it can't be for a private benefit. I don't know exactly what that means entirely, but you know, that's something I know the committee had looked at and was considering.
All I'm saying is out of fairness to both sides, I think that we, I, I don't see a way to do this without a one-year contract.
Yeah.
To be fair to the Y to run their camp without having to try to script it. I just don't know how you.
I'm not one way.
Problem necessarily, but that's like a crappy way to end a partnership. And I just don't know how the town would manage that facility.
I'm not one way for the other. It's, you know, this is, we got here because we workshop this whole thing. And when I talked with Andy, I said, I'll just go and figure it out. Um, because you guys are part of this process too. So, you know, it's really kind of in your hands right now. I like what Vicki's saying. I think it makes sense to do a year, maybe, you know, and just keep monitoring that communication piece and.
I just think it's too soon for us. As a town, like we'd be cutting off our nose to display our face in the moment. Even though in the future, as it evolves, we can come up with a, with a firm plan and vision for the thing, for the whole thing. And that's why we'd make that proposal for the year.
Um, be, before you make a, a motion, um, would it be best to table and have a workshop on this with Andy? So that we can talk turkey? Because if it goes into the last contract, I will disclose right now, I'm a firm no. There's only four members voting. So I just want to remind the board of that. So, you know, I'm not looking to set anybody up for failure, but unless, unless certain things are, uh, awarded to the town, it's, I'm going to be a hard no.
I hear you.
Well, then are you going to sit in the booth then?
I, I'm, it, it's not about opening. It, it's, it's about not spending taxpayer money is what it is.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a budget workshop next Thursday, correct? Can we do this at the beginning of that?
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Andy?
I'll double check.
Uh, it's the thirtieth at six P M.
In the meantime, I would ask Andy to go back to the board to see whatever they can do, they can see where at least half of the board right now is, seems to be thinking. And I think that's fair to both bodies.
Yeah, next Thursday should be fine. Six o'clock. No, and I understood that we were only looking at a one-year contract from the, from the workshop in the fall. Um, what surprised me was, was the reimbursement and the fees, so.
That evolved from conversation.
Yeah, and it's, it's okay. I just, right? It's just you, you guys have the work that you need to do on behalf of your town and your members, the same as we do for our members. So I'm not, once again.
It's not personal at all.
I don't, yeah.
So just want you to know, so.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to Joe Wagner and Karen Kane have some updates on the A A R P age-friendly survey.
Indeed. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of, thanks to Karen for all the work that you put into this effort. Uh, thanks to the two hundred and seventy-three people in town who responded to the, uh, the survey. And thank you to the folks at U M O who compiled the data for us and put it in the, uh, the slide presentation. It will have copies of, it's also online on the, uh, on the packet. I am quite prepared to go through each one of the thirty-two slides right there. But I believe that we've got other things on the agenda.
Sorry, Joe.
So the, the principal thing to do is, I think, send a date for a roundtable discussion comparable, comparable to the, uh, roundtable discussion Amber, you had on the, uh, organic waste, uh, program. And invite all, uh, folks from all the committees in, uh, in town. Uh, everyone, uh, out there in the TV land as well to, uh, walk through the, uh, precise information that was provided in the survey. Take a look at what other towns that are part of the, uh, age-friendly network are doing. And start looking at what, uh, maybe narrow it down to a, a doable, uh, agenda of initiatives. And maybe apply again for another grant through A A R P. The deadline for that one would, would be sometime in mid-March. So, so what date, uh, would the room be available? Or something you can discuss later?
I don't have that off the top of my head. But just email me, like, if you want to come up with some dates, I'll tell you, uh, Thursdays. Some, like the first and third Thursdays look okay. And Wednesdays and Tuesdays are probably your best bet. But I don't know off the top of my head what's available. So if you just kind of maybe send me a couple of dates, like, you know, in the next two, three weeks or so, I can keep that.
Okay.
Awesome. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, this was
Thank you.
Easy to, easy to find them.
Awesome response from you, Tom.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So we are going to jump to department and committee reports. Here's a fire chief's all-hands report. That's also online in the packet.
I want to add to that a little bit.
Great story.
We had our fire commission meeting recently, um, on the night. And, um, the, the twenty-twenty-five F two fifty and the twenty-twenty-five Chevy Tahoe have been ordered. And they should be in in about eight to twelve weeks. And it looks like they'll be able to be outfitted for service and be well within the budget. And, um, um, we talked about facilities, um, some other issues with bay lights, electrical issues, uh, and we will be getting hot and heavy into the budget discussion, um, at the next meeting, which is February sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. All right. And then we have the I T committee on the agenda. We have a proposal from, um, so if somebody wants to step up to the microphone.
I'll kick it off. So, uh, myself and Bill did a site survey of Bunginut. Uh, we came up with a pretty good plan, I think, um, for putting up cameras, putting in internet, using Starlink. And we did it for both sides for the ballpark and the beach side. And really for security, you know, making sure that there is no vandalism that happens on both sides. Uh, it can also be for any transactional business, right? So, uh, we talked about, uh, with the Y M C A. If we wanted to put somebody in the booth and we wanted to put in like a point of sales or something when people come in, we could actually use that internet access, uh, access for, uh, the transactional business. Like basically connecting into the town hall system. I think Bill has spent a lot of work, uh, on this project. Maybe, Bill, you want to talk about some of the ins and outs and some of the technical details?
In case you don't know who I am, I'm Bill Single.
Never seen this man.
So what Nigel said, one of the big things was, we, we've heard about some of the damages happened at the parks on both sides. And saying, you know, what can we do to help alleviate this, uh, so we don't have that extra cost? The other part of it was, he mentioned that we can, with the technology, if we can connect to the town hall, we can then extend it further and be able to do other functions. Uh, one of the things was we can have the camera read the license plate. And then with a little work from our internet people, we can connect it and say, are these actually town residents or not? So then also we can have them using something like an iPad. If they're going to bill somebody, they can do a short transaction online that would be able to print a receipt for the people so that they would get their receipt that they paid. But it would end up here at the town hall, not at the park. So you would know what transactions are taking place and how much money you should be collecting. So that was a, a, a nice feature that would be able to come into that. The Starlink piece of it kind of came to light this past year because with the federal government grants for internet connectivity that was supposed to be immediate has been three years. And we're told by the state, it's going to be at least another three years. Now they are awarding money out, but mostly to themselves, not the towns. So we know where that goes. So on the other side of it, we have things to be able to do on those sites for that connectivity. So we could use Starlink on the ballfield side, put it on the building. We could also put it on one of the buildings on the beach side and have redundant systems so that if one was out for some reason, you're still on with the other side. The other part of what we can do is we can connect the two sides with underground fiber and still have just at least one Starlink system to connect them both together. With that internet connectivity back to the town hall, the camera recordings can every day be automatically downloaded to the town. So if somebody gets an idea, well, we'll go burn the building down, they won't know who was here. It's too late. It's already back here at the town hall. So there's a lot of functionality that will work to put this into place. Now, some of the things I, I, we put together a little letter list here just to give some points of things of goals that we are looking for. The goals are kind of like, what is the problem and how do we fix it? So the first thing was to connect to the town hall and we would use Starlink. If you get out a little further, put the cameras up. At, at the beach side, if you go to where the, uh, log cabin used to be, there's a nice big telephone pole there. Well, from the top of that pole, you can see just about the entire park. So with a, with a good set of cameras there, you're going to have good video coverage of what's taking place. So, and it also protects from vandalism because it's too high up for most people to climb.
Did you climb with them?
Not me. Never.
I was just wondering if you did because you're telling me the vantage point from up there.
Well, I, I do my view from Google, Google Maps, and it, it shows me the view. So again, if you take the little, uh, attendance building at the park, they've got a small camera that mounts right into the side of the building. Most people wouldn't even see it. It's just a little bullet hole-like. When they drive in, it's going to read the plate. Easy thing now with the connectivity, check the town database, are they town residents? Now at least we get people being honest. Again, like I said, if you do a receipt, um, for the person, you can print it there. We now have the, the receipt records at the town hall, not at, at the beach side of things. So if we were to put the fiber in the ground across the street to connect everything, the cost is not terrible, but it's, it, to me, it's expensive. So by going with two Starlink systems and not putting the fiber in over a three-year period, because now the, the state's saying three years to get spectrum internet. To get to that point, that would save us about three thousand dollars in overall cost instead of putting the fiber in the ground. If we're going to go six years, it's cheaper to put the fiber in the ground. And, and the connectivity with fiber is much better than anything else. So it's a good route to go.
Starlink builds up the, so side belt fiber, I can change your mind and you can move Starlink somewhere else.
Yep. With, with Starlink now too, they've, they've just come out with a new plan, uh, called, it's a backup plan. So the, the Starlink for a site's a hundred and twenty dollars a month for unlimited connectivity. Um, of anywhere from a hundred to three, to three hundred megabit connection, which is pretty good connection.
Sorry, Bill, how much you can put up?
Hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Bill, is that for residential or commercial?
That's for residential. They look at that, um, as whether it's business or not, it's still residential if it's small usage. Um, they would be looking, if, if you were going to put a hundred employees on it, that would be business. There's no contract. No, no.
So if, I'm not saying we're, we're going to get the security, but if we wanted to shut the cameras off or turn off the internet, we can. So if we decided that we're going to lock it up for the winter, then I'm sure that nobody's going to go and vandalize it. We shut it down for three months and say, there's no security.
Yeah. So, yeah, we can do that anytime. We can turn it on and off anytime we want. So the, there's pieces to go in here that, that for the buildings, like the, the concession stand at Bunginut Ball Field, it would need to be insulated and some plywood needs to be put up to, to secure it inside. And then the equipment for the, the computer network needs to be purchased and the cameras and the things mounted. So the, it's listed for each side. Um, there was a, a sheet with the prices on it for the different things and it, and it's listed that, that way. What we, what we tried to put together here is, um, a price that it's going to be less than that price. In other words, that's, that's a, a do not exceed price. Uh, we wanted to make sure that if anything, it would go down, not up. So the, as far as that goes, that gives you your, the basic install for your, your security at both sides. And, and, and it is, it's a fairly substantial cost. And, and, and it is, it's a fairly substantial cost.
It's also a platform though for revenue.
It, it is because we can add to it. The hardware comes with an interface that we, that, that, uh. We, at the town can generate, set up so that we can interface with the other databases to get the connection. To give you the information that you need.
We got two pieces of paper. They look like there's a.
I know, yeah, I was, I was going to ask if that could be explained.
A little confused if, I think they're the same.
One for each eye.
One for each eye? And then, and then the back two is the same.
Can this be split up, Bill? Beach side versus ball, ball field side?
It is, well, it is.
It, it is already split up, Dave.
For that bottom, for that bottom number is, is for both, correct?
That is correct.
So, am I to say, uh, you know, you're, you're talking $18,000 for the water side?
No, if you look about, if you look at all the details, Dave, like it starts, I'm correcting if I'm wrong here, but there's one at the top that says ball field and then about halfway down it says park. And there's totals for each of those, right? So like 11, 894 is for the ball field side, 14, 222 is for the park side. Are you following me? Sorry.
Yeah, but you, but, but the total comes to $36,000.
Correct.
So you really can't divide it by two because you, you have buildings on the water side where you don't have it on the other side. My, my point was if it's, if it's broken, water side versus the other side. A, it's more palatable. B, it may be more functionable at the water side versus the ball side right now. And my other question is, has anybody looked into any kind of grant for this type of work?
Well, that was something I hadn't even mentioned yet because my suggestion was going to be that to, to look at grants, to look, uh, the state's got all kinds of money. They got millions of dollars for this and they're holding it. How do we get it out of them? I don't know. But look at the grants and then I would look at, um. If you want to raise it from taxation or any part of it, or if you want to do it out of a capital plan or a combination of all three or two or whatever. Different ideas of how to do it. But as far as what you asked about, Dave, yes, you could do one side first and then the other side second. You just want, I guess you would pick the most important side first and do that one and then do the other one. But yeah, there's different ways of doing that. And there's also some other avenues of, uh, some money savings that could be in there if there's no grants available. There is some work that, that part of this can be done, uh, with some donated time and equipment. For some of this that could save us seven or eight thousand dollars.
Matt, here?
Yes.
With respect to grants, have you really looked into the connecting authority for the possible?
More, yeah, oh, no, I have. I, I have asked about it and basically we're flat out told you're three years away. That's all I ever get from them every time, it's, it's at least three years away. And, and it's frustrating because it's supposed to have been done three years ago. Well, some people know who to ask, you know? If you know the right person to ask, you can get the results.
There's Tony. There's Tony.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't mean to be facetious, but, uh, you answered the first question I had, with respect to the location of the cameras. Because I think we got a situation over at Temple Pond recently with cameras were damaged. Okay, these are going to be out of easy reach or out of reach.
Those ones at the pond were supposed to be at the top of the pole.
And don't mean to be facetious here, but with respect to checking license plates. What's the difference between that and the producing by water vehicle license, which has got?
You can do that. Absolutely, you can do that. Yep, absolutely.
Starlink, are there other providers that might be US expensive? You know, this is toward Incogni uniform, but, you know, T-Mobile, US Cellular. Is that out of contracts?
Give you an idea on the Starlink. Starlink for the, for the residential homes was, the equipment was originally $600. And this last year they dropped it to $300 and it's now down to 250. So it's, your monthly cost is there, so you have to look at that. And, uh, I believe you're going to find the same speed connection with Spectrum is going to be about the same price. It's going to be close to that, uh, within 20 bucks.
You mentioned before, uh, interface with other programs. I know we're sort of in the direction of looking at my rec, say, a software program to purchase. Would this be able to operate the parks?
The hard, the hardware equipment that the town uses hasn't, uh, an interface, a program interface that is a user writable to be able to take data from the cameras and, and go to the different databases and extract data from it. So that's there. It has to be done by somebody, but it could be done locally here. It's not something you have to go hire a big company to do.
I saw for the, uh, this question too, but, uh, you got the heat pumps.
Yes. Well, it, it, it's a heat pump. Heat pump does air conditioning, so in the summer it's going to be hot. Again, you need your AC and then as far as if you're going to run through the winter, uh, when you use your battery, uh, backup systems, the battery backups, if it gets below zero, they're going to, they're going to crap out on you. You need something to maintain 40, 50 degrees. That's why the buildings are, need to be insulated. And again, at, at the beach side, it was, the thought was to put a six by eight building next to the pole. So that everything would run in conduits, which would protect it from vandalism. And, and again, you get your electricity, you get your battery backup. So unless you have an extended outage for, for electricity, you're, you're going to be online pretty much all the time.
I personally feel, uh, like it's an invasion of privacy to have license plates read. I think that's a little overkill for that. That's just a comment. I think you guys have been very thorough on this. I almost fell out of my chair when I, when I read it. And, and how long before, uh, this stuff is obsolete? And we have to replace it? What is the expected life of something like this?
Computer equipment these days, most stuff is made for one or two years. This equipment, you're probably going to get five years. You could probably push it longer than that as long as it's, it's updated by the manufacturer. But you're going to get five years out of it.
It also gets added to our remote managed services, so every camera, every hard drive, every, whatever device it is. Just like when I did the cameras at the transfer station, it was like multiple things. Get added so that our contractor does oversee the inventory of it and kind of keep in mind, um, what needs to be replaced. But that comes at a cost too. I don't know if that was included in the packet.
Yep.
It was not.
Okay.
It was not.
I, I had assumed that it would, the IT price for the contractor would go up.
Yes.
With all this, as we add, it, it has.
On managing the equipment, yes, it would. The one part that's not in there that really doesn't say anything is the installation and the setup. And everything except for the connection of the town hall. Would not have to be hired out and paid for, that we would be able to do it under his oversight to make sure it's done the way he wants it.
Who's his?
What's that?
Under whose oversight? And he signed up for that?
Not really.
Because we pay him hourly. So we have, this gets confused, this gets confused a lot. So we pay hourly for block time that we use here, like when systems are malfunctioning, it's going down, trio's not working. We have, and we always use like all that block time every year. So this would definitely fall outside of that and that's $150 an hour.
Yep, I'm, I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
But what I, what I was trying to get across is the installation and the setup. You would not have to hire him to do, that could be done. But the connection to the town hall would not be something that I would want to be involved with because it's getting into sensitive areas of things that I really shouldn't be into. So in other words, you wouldn't have to pay him to do the setup is what I'm, what I'm getting at.
We'd have to pay him $150 an hour. Like whatever his time is, we'd have to pay him for that, yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, if you say so.
I just, I work with Brendan all the time and I know if, you know, he's really lenient.
What I'm saying was, Brendan doesn't have to do that. We would do that. We would help get it set up so you wouldn't have to pay for it.
I know, I'm confused under, of what you're talking about, under his supervision, like what does that mean?
In order to connect here so that the video would be transferred to here. He's got to be able to connect into the systems that are here. And that's not something that I can do because I don't know how to get into the system that's here. I don't know the passwords.
He would have to do labor to do the interface into the town system.
That is correct.
Like one time, just to get it all, yeah.
That is correct.
So whatever that, if that takes him two hours, then it's $150.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
So we would pay him.
Yeah, we would pay him for that, yes. Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Have you guys looked at grants?
Have not, have not. Like I said, every time I call the state, is they say, no, no, nothing available.
I guess I would like to see the, see some grant possibilities that could drastically cut the cost or, I mean, we, everybody just saw how I feel about spending $41,000 for the YMCA. I'm, I feel, you know, pretty much the same way about the price tag on this. Now, if there were grants and somebody wanted to give us the money to get it and put it in and it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything, I would be like, hmm, okay.
If I knew who to contact at the state to get that, I would do it. But everybody I've called says, no, no, we're not doing that.
I would just not, I mean, I would, wouldn't call the state anymore. I would look at AARP or, you know, you can just quick Google search, you know, grants or IT recreation, something like that.
If you can, if you find it, Ron, I mean, I don't think we can apply it.
There would, I mean, yeah, you're.
If I find it.
I mean, and I know that, um, I see, we get them at emails at the library. Don't ask me why, they always send them after they have already gone by, but Senator King sends out all the federal grant stuff. And his office, so if you reached out to, you know, maybe one of their offices, Senator King, Senator Collins, and ask their staff if they know of any grants. Federal grants or, I mean, we could call our local reps here in, in Maine too and ask them that. But yeah, I would, I would like to see some grant information that could help defray that.
Questions or thoughts on this?
Probably be better off to leave them to myself for the moment.
David, I want to forget about you in the box.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm good.
An effort, this is.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I can tell you guys put some time into it. I appreciate that.
All right, next up, yeah, Bunginut Community, hope so. Okay, sorry.
Are you guys going to cover the general field community?
No, so they just asked for the information, Greg sent it and I emailed it to them. So that, yeah, I did share it with the board. You don't have to hang with us if you don't feel like hanging any longer. Don't be a cop. I'm not kicking you out either, it's past my bedtime.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
All right, Bunginut Community, come on, because you were stuck with us too.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to put you all on the agenda to just kind of get a status update of where you all kind of are at as far as action items and where you're headed.
Yep.
Because I think April is when, yeah, the ad hoc kind of.
Resolves, yep.
So we just wanted to kind of check in and see where you're all at.
So we had a meeting last week, overdue meeting, and I can run through, um, the talking points of the agenda. We did, it was a long meeting, um, so I will try to make this brief and kind of checklisty. We, we kind of, uh, went over the status of the, of the ongoing repairs down there. So chapel repair, chapel roof has been replaced. And then, um, the masonry still needs to be done. There's a few stones that need to be fixed. And Dave is in contact with the, with the mason, who'll be doing that in the spring, I think. The bridge repair is complete and that looks amazing. Let's see, they, um, there was a lot of materials that were donated and they are on site. We have, um, we have gravel, we have a load of gravel and a huge load of ECM, which is erosion control mix. It's in the upper parking lot and then there's a smaller, there's a smaller, um, pile down by the water. And, um, I believe Kevin is going to help spread the gravel. That will be for the pathway down, the winding pathway down in the springtime. To kind of patch that up, it's super bony, there's a lot of washout, so he can spread that. I think it's like a temporary patch and then.
On an existing pathway that is there already.
Yeah, instead of the, that main pathway, you're looking down at the water with the railroad ties in it. I think that the future plan is to try to divert people around. There's a winding path down, but there's a little bit of erosion there and some rocks in the way. But, um, Dave had some gravel donated and Kevin's able to spread that in the spring. And then, um, I think beyond that, we're looking at like erosion control measures, whether it's rubber razors or David mentioned like a, um, like a water ditch on the high side, um, to help prevent further erosion. The plan for the ECM, uh, the erosion control mix, I think is to, um, kind of pick up what's on the beach currently. rake that up towards the water's edge to sort of create a, a buffer. Um, and then hopefully replace with sand. I think we need to talk to, um, CEO about permitting for that, about putting down the sand. So those are the materials on site. Pathway down, handicap parking. Kevin Bear is going to, I believe, see the, um, CEO tomorrow night. He's going to try to nail down a time to meet with her to talk about, um, permitting, if we can put some of that gravel in the handicap parking area. Pines, I mean, the, the KCB cleanup looks amazing. I haven't been down there in a couple of weeks, but I, I believe that they had done, done the final cleanup of the couple of trees that needed. Clearing. Yeah, I haven't seen that. Currently working a park map. I mean, we do have several maps that we've put together, but, um, I think something that we had started in November was taking just, um, like a list of the total inventory down there. There are so many buildings down there that aren't being used. And whether they can be just completely demoed or repurposed. There's a, there's an unused spring out behind the ball field. And then on the, where there's that grassy parking area, if you're standing in that grassy parking area by the irrigation pond to the left, there's like just a dilapidated building. I'm not even sure what it, what it's for, so. Things like that, just try to catalog all of that stuff. There's piles of garbage on the trail side where the trails are. I think they're just like old bunk houses, old latrines from way back Boy Scout days, just piles of metal. So inventorying all of that. KCB cleanup, I got that. Trail status. Colin from, um, the Eagle Scouts has been actively working that. He started up, he started a small kiosk right by the Boy Scout Trail entrance. And he has given us some dates that he's going to continue to work throughout. And he has given us some dates that he's going to continue to work throughout January and February. And I forwarded those over to Joe and to Dave as well. And, you know, if, I think, I think he's going to start on days that he can, he's going to continue with his trail work. I want to say that his trail work is probably eighty percent done, seventy-five, eighty percent done. But he, but he's looking to finish his kiosk and to build some benches, and so he sent us dates that he'll be working on those if anybody can help. And also been in contact with Emily Brown from the recreational trails program. She's the coordinator for the grant. That seems very promising. I think it's something that we can use to bet, either better the trails or better the, the kiosks, parking area. And what I would like to see down the road is have the Bunginut Trails connect with the Sid Emery Demo Forest Trails. It would be an amazing trail system, but that side needs a little love too. So, but I think that, um, the RTP grant has, I think we have some opportunity to use that. Let's see, okay. That was from the, that was from what we covered on the agenda. And then in the meantime, in the past week, in talking with Kevin, he, he was going to go down and check out the tree review, do the tree review. And he was going to investigate, he was going to start investigating a trail. He called it a bypass trail to the chapel. Something that you could access, like if we were to have the three pines areas, you could access what we would, what we had called Pines Two without intruding on, um, through Pines One. So he was going to investigate that. Karen provided names of a couple of grants we could take a look at, Main Community Foundations and the AARP Community Challenge. We were going to investigate maybe new picnic tables for the pines area or sprucing up the volleyball area. And Kevin was going to investigate perhaps a dock in the pines area. He, um, he was going to get a generic price from the Hammond Lumber catalog and he was going to look into pricing on perhaps some Adirondack chairs that you had mentioned. Just as far as supplier, like the quantity materials with the preliminary, you know, look at chairs.
I'd like to see some of the things going to composite rather than wood. Just because, you know, you keep replacing them, we've had.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Kevin had mentioned, you know, in his email to me that he had a couple that he got from margins or whatever that were composite and he wipes them down like once a year and so he was all over that. I need to provide, okay, this is, uh, the ramps. I need to provide Lindsay with the final specs for the ramps so that she can move forward with the RFP. So at last week's meeting, we were discussing the specs of the ramps. We had originally, our original quotes were for four by four platforms with four by sixteen ramp. And then last week we were talking, uh, well, because I had a, um, like a second quote from Mainly Docs and they suggested, well, what about a four by six? So we had some discussion about that last week. I contacted Nate and he got back to me saying, um, I'll just quote what he said. Structurally, it would be the same if you had a four by four or a four by six, it's just going to be two feet longer. But yes, you could, and he, because Nate from Svego Dock is the only one that's actually physically been down there to measure the site locations. So he said that, uh, yes, you could use a four by six in any of the locations that he's quoted. He just doesn't think it's necessary because the platform is anchored at the corners. So, um, I, I think that, I would like to propose the four by four. What we would propose for Lindsay to go forward with an RFP would be a four by four platform, which is anchored to shore with railings. Four by sixteen ramp with railings. Both the platform and the ramp have some sort of composite decking. It's non, non-slip. And then there's a small, small little flap at the bottom of the ramp, it's just like a gradual transition. The, um, the ramp itself, you can remove and you can store however we choose to do that if, if. But we, you know, we talked last week about going forward with the permitting process that we would permit as a permanent structure. And so again, Kevin said that he could talk to the CEO tomorrow to see if we could make an appointment to go forward, planning board review for, as a permanent structure.
Is that all?
Yep.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, and also location. So I think in our original, like draft scope that we provided, we gave a one as a, um, one option would be to have a ramp in the Y area. Not knowing what the future of that would hold, I just thought that that would be a fantastic location to have one, let's, you know.
Well, there's kind of one there now, like the.
Yeah.
It's not accessible, but I think that was the intention behind it.
So that option one would be to have one in the Y area, the main beach, and then one in the pines. And then we provided, um, an alternate where you, if you didn't want to have one in the Y area, you could have one at the main beach and then two in the pines. But I, I would, I would just rather have you guys make that, I mean, that would be your decision, I don't. And then if, if, I think it would be easy enough to say specifically where, you know, if you say, do you want to put one in the Y, then we could provide that. And then the location for the main beach and pines. I believe the location in the pines we had for Y, main beach and pines was Pines Two. So I don't know if it's, if you would advise not putting one in the Y, excuse me, Y area or not.
No, I would, because I think the eve.
Sorry, I just jumped.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is still used in the evenings and on the weekends by everybody.
Uh, yeah.
And.
You made a good point. I, I, I jotted that down when he was talking about, when you were inquiring about, yeah, the Y and their beach area. To be honest, I haven't noticed the signage over there recently, but I know when I brought my kids over there, when they were toddlers, I was always under the impression, just based on the signage that was there, even on the weekends that we couldn't go. There were signs that said, this area is, you know, managed by, or used by the YMCA. And I always felt like I was breaking the rules by going in there on a Sunday because it wasn't clear, I didn't know.
Yeah.
You know, I was new to town and so anyways. But that's something we can do under the committee to improve the signage.
I like the, I like the three locations picked out, it's great. And if, if the pines does end up being one, two, three, and it starts getting rented out more and more, then maybe we add to the other ones as in, in the future.
Right.
I just, you know, not to beat a dead horse, I guess I just want to reiterate, like it, it, the committee, because of the way the charter reads.
Oh, yeah.
Stops in April. And I don't want to like stop progress, but I also, we don't want to have like grants that then nobody can do something with.
Oh, yeah.
So like, I just want to make sure there's a plan.
Yeah.
So would it possible for the, of the committee to be reconstituted as a subcommittee of existing parks and rec?
You guys appoint all the boards and committee members, so they would just, I assume would go through the process to apply, right? Like if you're not already on the Parks and Rec committee, you would just apply to be on it?
Right.
My assumption?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see why any of the work would have to stop in that regard. I mean, this would just be reclassification of the, and reappointing of the members to a different committee when that one ends.
If they choose to apply.
If they, yeah, I'm not saying they have to, I'm just saying if they want to, then they'll have to apply. And, and then we'll go from there.
Right.
The ramps, I think, if that's the, what you're referring to, like for the, for the grant, I think that I can get that to Lindsay as soon as, as tomorrow, just give her what I just told you, like the, because it, you know, as recently as last week, we were.
Yeah, I think you just, you mentioned like a grant about trail systems and some other grants, and I think that's awesome. I'm not, I'm not saying like, oh my gosh, I'll do it. I just want to make sure that if the committee is going to apply for a grant, that either something happens or it's determined that it tends to go through Parks and Rec. That's all. I just don't want the town to be left hanging with like all this grant money and nobody doing it.
No, the trails, that's why I joined the Bunginut Committee, because I was interested in getting the trails going. And so I think I would follow up, I'll follow up with that regardless through Parks and Rec, you know. I love working with the Boy Scouts, they're doing awesome, they're great to, you know.
I love it.
To happen. Yeah.
Then they actually do it, that's even better.
Yeah, yeah.
Indeed.
Yep.
Anyone else have questions or thoughts on this one?
Well, I just wonder, do we have a specific day that they're done? Like, do we know, is it like?
April eighteenth of this year is when, because I think the first person was appointed April eighteenth, so it started there for two years.
So realistically, like all of the things that you just, you know, listed, like.
Yeah, because April, I mean, I would love to have May, at least until the park opens, to have, you know, all of the, the materials laid out and so forth and.
I guess like from a board perspective, I would just, what I'm thinking in my head, and anyone can jump in on this thought, is the committee gets to a point where you realize, you recognize that there's just going to be stuff that, like, hey, this is still a great idea, we're not going to have time to do it as this committee, and maybe have some type of what that transition plan looks like. Like this is where we're going to, we're going to come to this kind of a stopping point and then kind of pass it, pass the torch, right, to the Parks and Rec. Or maybe because you're on Parks and Rec, maybe you just keep.
I guess that, so Parks and Rec, are you, are we saying that Parks and Rec, like assumes the responsibility?
I think they're just saying if you have something like in, in process, right?
Oh, yeah.
Committee, this is in process.
Oh, yeah.
It's not going to get done. Or we got this grant, but Parks and Rec is agreeing to sort of take on the next steps on it because of like.
Yeah. I mean, you have Buildings and Grounds Committee as well, which is a little newer, but I mean, I think, they, they've been actually going around and doing the inventory of like the transfer station. And I think they went out to Javon and some of the parks just to kind of look at what are the structures there and just understand the building and ground and things, so.
I just don't want any of the, the good work to like just stop because the committee stops, that's all. I don't think you're going to let that, have that.
I think it can be carried on and we can still adhere to what the charter says. I don't, I think that's just semantics in a sense.
But you're kind of passing it over to like another committee, so without really, I, I think I hear what Jessica's saying, is like having that transitional plan, because, you know, I wouldn't go to someone and be like, here, this is your job now, bye.
Well, no.
Not that they would do that, but just so that it's like, it flows and it's, you know, things, pieces don't get dropped.
I mean, it says it in the project statement, right? Upon disestablishment, responsibility will carry over to the Parks and Rec committee. I, I think we're good. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that's sort of like where that goes. Anyone else have questions? Dave in the box, you good?
No, Holly laid it out very well.
Perfect.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks for staying with us.
Hey Dave, I want to talk to you at some point about the masonry stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also in the packet, treasure is expensive for, so that's in there and online, so we want to read it at your leisure. Jumping into item five, new business. Lindsay worked very hard on a beautiful committee handbook. I don't know that we want to like deep dive through it, I think a lot of.
Well, I, I'd like a raise of hands for everybody who read every word on it.
Couldn't get one.
Oh, my hands, my hands are up.
Oh, I've read one little darn thing. I'm on page twenty-five.
So here's, here's the cool part about it is like a good chunk of it is just policies and examples of things like, here's a sample.
Very thorough.
Here's a, it's just, it's really awesome and thanks.
I think it's, it's totally thorough.
Overdue and I really like.
Very, very thorough.
It's very thorough. I will say that I didn't read every page. With all the other stuff that we had to read and actually getting some snow to plow and some other issues that have been happening. I perused it. I read some of it thoroughly.
I, I wish I had something like that as a first year select.
Well, there was the, uh, the MMA elected officials manual.
I did it.
But I don't even, I don't even think that is as thorough as this.
I only, like perusing through it again, I, I made a few red marks myself, just to add a couple, like really minor changes.
Well, every other thing that's this size that we've had as, that we've voted on enacting, we've done a workshop and gone over it. Do we want to do that or? What do, I mean, do we, don't we, don't we owe this piece of document the same service that we've done with the other ones?
Well, I was actually going to ask if we could table it because I only got to page twenty-five with all the other stuff. But I am, I feel like I'm being pretty, pretty thorough throughout, like marking up what I see and, you know. But yeah, I, that's all I could get to, to twenty-five.
I'm not ready to vote on it.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
But I, and again, I, I like the workshop idea because then it's like.
So, so if, if we all take the time to do that, what you're proposing and that you've written in, you're probably ready because that's how you are. Just wondering, time wise, I don't want to let this language like the franchise agreement by any means. But especially that, but I, I do think that's a great idea and I, I am all for it. I just don't know if I'm all for it as written. I don't know yet.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt if you guys just make some notes, go through it. I mean, to me, it's, it's a guide for volunteers. I see a lot of other towns implement similar, you know, handbooks just like this. And it just helps them understand, you know, how to operate as volunteers, because we are the public sector and, so I just see it as a guide and, and it's kind of like, what do you expect? You guys appoint your volunteers, so what do you expect out of them? And it might be a good.
That's why I think it's, it's really good for that. I also noticed too that, that was going to be a question I had for you on this, that you use some, some samples and, um, is, did, is that from some of the things that you had, put in here for samples, is that stuff that we have already have in other places? Or, um, let me see if I can, well, I can wait till the workshop too, so.
I mean, like the meeting minutes and the bylaws, I sort of just created a sample, but the Zoom policy I took, everybody has the same Zoom.
Right, it's all the same. That's what I wanted to know, if, if a lot of those kinds of policies were the same and they were constant from one document to the other that we've already approved.
I really like the budget worksheet and the creating goals and initiatives.
Yeah, I liked that too.
I thought that would be really helpful.
Lindsay, all the appendices come as part of it, your handbook?
Yeah.
Okay, I would just suggest that maybe a correlation between the topics in the handbook proper with the appendix, with each appendix, might be a nice extra touch. Like for example, on page eighteen, purchasing policies, a C appendix G, something like that.
Yep.
What's up?
What's up?
Yep. Calendar? Get the bag stuck on the arm of the chair first.
You think we've knocked this off? The first time that we each added for thirtieth or?
That's budget and we added the Y.
Too much?
I don't. Good suggestion, right?
I appreciate the attempts to add it to our already together.
So does next day, right?
Well, I'm not sure.
I will never recommend it again.
February sixth available? It's a Thursday.
That's my fire commission.
Oh, yeah, no wonder it sounded familiar, like it was.
They're like, I mean, we don't always have to do it in six PM. I don't know if there's other times.
We start fire commission at five fifteen. But we're starting the budget stuff, so I can't say I'll be, I can be out of there by six.
About the tenth, Monday the tenth?
I have that available.
Work for all of you.
Works for me to make it happen.
David, oh, no. It doesn't work for me, but I can send my feedback ahead of time. That's from the start.
Because if we did it the tenth, then we, if we hammer it, go through it, get it through, then our meeting after that, our next select board meeting would be the eighteenth, I think. Washington's birthday is a holiday, correct, the seventeenth?
Yeah. Ooh, you're on it.
That's also.
Does it says it on your calendar?
Yes. I don't remember Washington's birthday. I barely remember him.
Listen, I don't know what you celebrate. All right, sorry.
I'd celebrate everything.
It's getting late. I gotta knock it off. Okay. Go ahead, I'll send my feedback ahead of time. Does that work for you, Dave?
Yep.
Maybe I'll zoom from the hotel.
What time, what time do you wanna do it? Do you wanna do it earlier?
Not if it's a warm place.
What?
I said not if it's a warm place. You don't wanna be.
What time do you guys wanna do it on the tenth?
Yeah, I don't work on Monday, so.
Do you wanna do it earlier?
Five? Does that work for you, Dave? Does that work for you?
I'm fine. I can do it at four if you want. That's when she gets to her work.
Yeah, and then I can just go out.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Four work for you, Dave?
Yep.
Okay.
Switching up a little.
So if I'm not here at four, it's because I thought it was at five or I thought it was at six, so.
We can remind you.
Yes.
Can remind you on the thirtieth?
My, my phone automatically goes six PM, so, okay. Got it in at four.
I was late to my first fire commission meeting because I thought it was at six, but it was five fifteen.
She's forty-five minutes in.
They're texting me, like, hey, are you coming? I, I, Matt, Chief Matt texted me and I zoomed right down there, but I kind of felt like an idiot. I don't know why I'm telling everyone that, probably because nobody else has stayed up this long to watch this.
They might have, you never know. Uh, okay. Item number six, minutes.
Did somebody not get a call?
January sixth, I didn't get a call.
So moved.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to payroll warrant number thirty-two in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accounts payable warrant number thirty-one for FY twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Second. Okay, some quick questions on the board? Obviously, the sixty-eight thousand plus for renovation property management, that's the last disbursement from the escrow account. For the Brock Road Development.
I believe it's the last, yeah.
I said it on there.
And the one grand for precision collision, is that for the? What's the status of the order has been?
Also, to call the sums, you guys say, you're banned. I went up, I tried it out, I don't know how I'm gonna come down Friday and go through it to make sure, you know, the spelt, the things to be changed because of possible, you know, the CMW's degree, which can happen.
Did you look underneath the axles?
I didn't crawl under it in the snowbank, but then I, you know, made sure everything worked, you know, buck it forward, back, backhoe. It looked very good.
Thank you. The last question I have was the thirteen hundred total convert, is that for the evening system here? Okay. That's what I got. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Yes. EcoMaine this month for December tipping was fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. And recycling was nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. And I was like, just curious to see like, okay, if the food waste diversion program could start, if we had it up and running and if we could save twenty percent, pull that out, it would have been twenty-nine hundred dollars less in tipping fees.
Wow.
So I think that's a, that would be nice to see that money back in, back in town.
Never thought of it quite like that, like that's awesome that you figured that.
Yeah, well, I was just like, oh, okay, they say forty, forty, forty-three percent is of municipal solid waste is food. And so I just thought, okay, modestly, if we could say we could take out half of that, then that's twenty-nine hundred dollars a month, you know, so.
EcoMaine, I estimate that your savings to the town of about sixty-eight thousand.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am abstaining.
Gosh, there's like nothing to sign. Not nothing, but. You're gonna sign the right one.
Couldn't be mine. So what do we put on Dave's line? Just draw a mark? Or just leave it?
Oh, boy. This is one new thing.
Yes, that's fine. No, that's fine. That's why I looked and like, yeah, look at them.
Promise that was a tragic trick even just signing it.
Well, usually I just sign, so.
Right.
I'll pay attention this time.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I wanna discuss it.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. You were very productive meeting.
I'm pretty happy it was on a Tuesday because otherwise tomorrow would be lifting day, but I lifted this morning, so.
It's lovely.
Yes.